Thank you, Mr. Speaker. After the recess, I understand that there's been some discussion between the proffer of the amendment and the author of the legislation. I would like to now yield to the proffer of the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Muny Barnes?
Mr. Speaker, in our efforts to trying to work to see what's best for our, I guess, our community when it, as it relates to building houses, the one amendment may good, the unintended consequences can even be more damaging. And as I was looking to seeing what we could do to support giving families who want, first time homeowners, who want to try and have a better quality of life for their families into realizing full home ownership, I knew that the unintended consequences in this case may be detrimental effect than a positive effect. So, and after speaking closely with the author of the legislation, we know that the intent of the system development charge is to use those resources to upgrade, refurbish, renovate, and work with, making sure that GWA has the resources it needs to make those, that infrastructure for our community better. And as we continue to move forward into trying to see how we can get our people here to realize that tomorrow dream of full home ownership and being able to give a family something that they can call our own, we will continue to look closely at other avenues and other angles that could make sure that our residents can realize substantial savings in building houses on, from a different perspective. So, at this time, I'm just going to ask that I withdraw the amendment at that time and then just work closely with the author of the legislation. Senator Masi.
You're welcome, Senator. So, on the motion to withdraw, no objections, so ordered. So, on the, Senator Sir Nicholas, I know that you were, okay, so you don't have anything to, on the main motion then, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Tom Adda, would you like to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and I also would like to proffer a couple of amendments.
Okay.
You know, in the process of the, my colleagues' interest in really increasing the threshold, we went and started doing some calculations and found that if, in fact, we increase that threshold, we are, we put ourselves, we are then better able to actually help those families with the lower incomes. For example, the bill right now proposes to set a threshold of $180,000. So, if I build a home, the cost of construction plus the land, and it's valued at $180,000, that according to Bill 112 will be considered an affordable housing structure, which will then be eligible for the proportionate percentage of basically allocation of the systems development charge. So, given that, the best way then to discuss that concept is that if we're setting the threshold at $180,000, then the systems development charge for water would be $1,181 versus the set level of $2,126. And if the construction happens to be in an area that's serviced by wastewater, the percentage then will actually result in a systems development charge of $1,930, which comes up to a total of $3,111 or a 44 percent discount, 44 percent decrease, from what he would otherwise pay under the current arrangement. Now, if we increase that threshold to, let's say, Senator, the Senator from Dedido suggested, let's take a look at $212,000 as the threshold. So, if we do that, the percentage, the percentage rate to be applied to the systems development fee cools down, in the case of water, down to 1 percent, and for the wastewater, 1.6 percent, such that the total systems development charge would actually be $2,642, which is 52,000 or 52.8 percent less than what he would otherwise have to pay under the current arrangement. So, I would just, I'm just going to need to find, I need a couple more minutes actually to find where that sweet spot is, and maybe we can reduce that percentage by maybe a tenth of a percent, so that we can really better help those that we are in fact looking at to help, without breaking the back off the utility. Now, earlier, somebody in a sideline conversation raised the issue, aren't we infringing on the PUC's prerogatives to set rates? And the answer to that is, no, we're not, because the systems development fee, as it's set right now, has already was actually set by the Public Utilities Commission. And the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, the Guam Water Works Authority, and the PUC themselves, in informal discussions, have basically said, have no problems if you're using the established systems development fee as a point of departure, and what kind of a discount you want to give to your lower income families is really something that they don't feel is infringing upon their prerogatives. So, I just, I just, maybe I can, I can get with, if we can go, we can go ahead and send this down, third reading, and I'll get with the legal counsel, so we can make the technical changes on the threshold, which right now looks like it would be around 212,000 or maybe just a little bit more than that. And then we will have to make an adjustment in the language on the percentage rates that will be applied against the value of that affordable home that we're looking at. And so, that's, that's an amendment that I would like to make, and I don't know how you want to handle that.
Senator, I suggest that I will allow you to do that, we'll set it aside, and then I'll continue, and when you're done, then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
And I'd like to continue then with the next bill, which is 161.
Sounds fine.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
All right, so on that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So, we're going to go to Bill 161. Senator Uggan, you're recognized. How does this differ from the one that's in the committee report?
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much for inquiring.
We are, but when you, when you do make that motion, can you please make sure that the substituted bill that were, that you just passed out, it's different from the one that's in the committee report? So, and I think the, and the difference I'm looking at is probably your handwritten 161 versus what was typed in the committee report?
Madam Speaker, I understand that some of the copies that are being distributed do not have the page two, because they were supposed to print front and back, so if I can just request a 30-second recess?
Oh, you're missing page two, yes.
Yes.
I see.
The copy that's distributed. I apologize. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Okay, and we'll recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator Uggan, I understand you have a substituted version.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the acceptance of Bill Number 161 COR, substituted by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs, and Judiciary, and it really should read "and as further substituted on the floor," rather than "and amended on the floor." So, it really should read "and as further substituted on the floor." I'd like to request for acceptance of this for, or to refer, move to refer this proposal to the third reading for consideration.
Motion to accept, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Motion to place now, please.
Motion to place in third reading, Madam Speaker.
And you would like to speak on it? No, I'd like for you to explain.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, let me just go ahead and read the title of this particular measure, because I believe it's self-explanatory, and it's an act relative to the establishment of a Guam Veterans Treatment Court within the judiciary of Guam through adding certain sections to Title VII Guam Code annotated, and this act shall henceforth be referred to as the Justice for Veterans Act of 2013. I'd like to thank you and all of our colleagues for allowing for the placement of this particular legislation on the agenda. Madam Speaker, when this initial, this idea was initially proffered or shared, I was at a ceremony at the district court.
That must be changed.
And Chief Judge Francis Tidinko-Gatewood had alluded to the possibility of creating a veterans' court, considering the number of our veterans who unfortunately go through the judicial system and in which some of their ailments are not appropriately recognized, and subsequent to that, the proper treatment is not administered. So, Madam Speaker, shortly after that, the Chief Justice from the judiciary of Guam had taken the initiative to set up a committee to review the possibility and what the structure and the requirements are going to be in terms of formulating or creating the Guam Veterans Treatment Court. This proposal, as provided, provides the discretion to the judiciary of Guam to move in that particular direction in terms of the judicial council adopting the, for the establishment, adopting a resolution for the establishment of a Guam Veterans Treatment Court. Let me just say this, it's timely, not only because next week, on the 11th, obviously, we're celebrating the, one of the auspicious days for all veterans nationwide, and that is Veterans Day. In conjunction with that, Madam Speaker, the number of individuals, and I need to be very sensitive to this, because certainly it's not in recognition that our men and women are going to go through this judicial process, but it has been stated that anywhere from 15 to 20 percent of our men and women who unfortunately go to the combat zone have some form of either stress disorder or PTSD. If that's the case, in most situations, such as myself, when I had returned from my deployment in June of 2012, I had to go through an evaluation timeline. When I first returned, well, prior to my departure, when I first returned, within 30 days, within 60 days, within 90 days, and within 120 days of a self-evaluation, and if I felt that in fact there were any ill effects, then obviously, the system would kick in. Well, Madam Speaker, in some situations, we have found that some veterans have withheld some of that, that information, only because it may affect their employment. And unfortunately, as a result of that, there's one incident where the individual went through the judicial system and then was recognized shortly after that. And this, Madam Speaker, would allow for the identification of a veteran, should he or she need and deserve treatment prior to any imposition of, or requiring that that individual go through the entire judicial process. So, Madam Speaker, I thank all of our colleagues who have co-sponsored this, and I encourage our colleagues to look at it and, and see if in fact, this is the direction, I feel that this is the direction that this community has to take, and certainly, providing a treatment court for our veterans would be able to further, not only support our veterans, support their families, but just as importantly, support the entire island community. So, I ask for your consideration and the consideration of all of our colleagues. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Vice Speaker, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the good sponsor for allowing me to be co-sponsor of this legislation. Unfortunately, I just want to ask if we could have legal counsel be able to make an amendment in, or maybe I should have, not sure if it's technical or substantive. The amendment adding a new subsection D does not address subsection A of Section 2101, and we probably should be clear as, as to whether or not this is going to be a court of record or not. I would suggest that it be placed as a court of record, and if we could instruct or allow legal counsel to make the requisite amendment in subsection A of 2101, making this a court of record.
Do you show that?
Is that technical or substantive?
Yes, it's substantive, but it is, it's technical.
All right, then, I'll make the substantive amendment to state that I want it to be a court of record.
Okay.
And ask that legal counsel place it wherever is appropriate in subsection A.
Okay, yes, all right.
But otherwise, I support the, the concept of the, and the intent of the legislation. It is imperative that we, as a community, recognize that in their efforts to try to protect our freedoms, our men and women that have gone into harm's way have unfortunately come back with some major problems that need to be addressed, and it's not that we're trying to condone their actions, as much as recognize that it was in their efforts to try to protect our freedoms that they were damaged or, or suffered some psychological problems that we, as a community, really need to address separately from other cases that go before the court. And so, I fully support the establishment of a veterans' court, even if it, whether or not it is or is not within the mental health court, but to establish the court to pay special attention and recognize the, the special circumstances by which some of our young men and women are returning from, from combat. So, I thank everyone, and I ask that my amendment be...
Yes, so on the amendment then, which is substantive, but yet very technical to the bill, that the legal counsel then make that correction without any objections, so ordered. On the, on the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak, there being none? Senator Uggan, you want to close, or you want to send it down? On the motion then to send, I'm sorry?
All right. Thank you very mu, very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the good Vice Speaker for moving in that particular direction, because he's certainly very cognizant of the requirement to be able to ensure that the establishment of such a program is reflected in the court of record. So, I thank you for that particular amendment. And to my colleagues, in terms of considering this, I certainly appreciate your consent in terms of addressing this at this point in time, especially in light of, I understand that some of our troops may be returning sometime next month, a small component, so they're going to start returning from the combat zone next month, and I, we hope that they never have to go through this to the judiciary of Guam, but certainly will be properly treated and recognized through the evaluation process. But I believe that by virtue of setting this up, it would be another mechanism that would be extremely supportive of our veterans in the, in the community. So, Madam Speaker, one additional amendment, if I can move, that the good Senator from Manila slash Chalan Pagal, Senator Barnes, be added as a co-sponsor of the measure, and then to proceed to the third reading. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to our colleagues.
On the amendment then to add Senator Muny Barnes to the co-sponsorship list, without any objections, so ordered, and motion to place 161 to third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 150, 150 first and then...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 150-32 be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to just speak on the bill very briefly.
Hi, 150, oh, sorry, I was pulling another bill out, okay. 150, yes, Speaker Panglin, and you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 150 would be, was a bill that was introduced to rezone two contiguous lots within the Alageta Street area of Dedido, and unfortunately, when we were looking at the lots, we thought that the two contiguous lots were consolidated as one single lot, which would then meet the requirements of the legislature and the statutes that every single land issue shall be considered as a single matter in a single lot. Unfortunately, when one of the members asked me about it, I said it was consolidated. We went back to ensure and verify, and it was not consolidated. There are actually two separate lots, same owners, and they are contiguous. And so, Bill 150, I'd like to make an amendment on Bill 150 then, to amend the title itself and strike out, strike out Lot Number Three, and Three, so it would be, the title would read "An Act to Rezone Lot Number Two of Track 1419," and to make the same change in Section Two of Line 13, that should be Lot Number Two, strike out and Three of Track 149, and that would make the bill conform to our statute's understanding rules.
So, and you're right, and Line Three as well, Line Three, so...
Yes, and Line Three as well.
And, okay, we'll address that first, but then I wanted to ask you later on about the square meters, the area, also whether that, again, would be a change, but for that, for the amendments on the title, to make sure that it is only one lot, which is Lot Number Two, and that also is on Line Three and Line 13. No objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And with that change, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move then that Bill 150...
Is the square meters the same then?
Yes, it's still 18.
4-1, okay. So, on, and the motion then to send 150 to the third reading file, back to the third reading file, with no objections, so ordered. Speaker Panglin, you're recognized for 217.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. 217, Madam Speaker, then, is the bill that we reintroduce to take care of the deleted lot in Bill 150, and so that would then rezone Lot Number Three of Track 1419 to the same zone from A to C of this contiguous lot of, to Lot Number Two, and with the same owners, once again, Madam Speaker. And so, I'd like to then move that Bill 217 be placed in the third reading file as well.
On the motion to send 217-32 to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. You're welcome, Speaker Panglin. Power 150. Bill 74.
On 180, do you want to send it down at this point, or?
[inaudible]
Your bill?
112.
112.
No, there is one amendment that I...
Oh, okay. All right, Madam Speaker, you're recognized on 74.
Thank you ver, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, when we were discussing Bill 74 last week, the chairman, of course, had asked if we could basically kind of set it aside so that we'll be able to meet with GPA because of some concerns with, with PUC and with Bond Counsel. And so, as a result of that meeting, and they basically came back, I know, with a version that they would like, you know, to see on the bill, and as a result of that meeting as well, I wanted to make sure that we have all the information in place, and so we had to, to go back and do some research. So, once we did that, then what we've done is that we've put together a bill, and rather than have one whole sheet, where I'm going to go one by one to do an amendment, I would like to ask if the body can accept the version that we've given everyone this morning, and it says with an asterisk, "as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs and substituted on the floor by the author and further substituted on the floor by the author."
On the motion to accept, hearing no objection.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. What I'd like to do then, if I may, and I know I'll speak as fast as I can, but I also have a bunch of documents that I'll be making reference to, because everything I'm speaking to actually has the documentation from, you know, from PUC or from Bond Counsel, and letters from Bond Counsel as well. So, the very first thing in this, what this bill would do, like I said, is to make the appropriate change to the title where it says "to" that particular chapter relative to energy efficient fund. I've added additional information on page two, and this is information that is documented, like I say, with PUC as far back as December 20, I mean, 2008, basically based on, on the recommendations by the Georgetown Group, and in, in that testimony, of course, that they provided, and we were able to get a copy of that, and, and it's in this language that was, it says before the Guam Public Utilities Commission, GPA Docket 11-09, and then the information that we have from Georgetown, to provide this kind of information to let you know that what this, actually what they're saying here, and just briefly, is that pursuant to this order, PUC indicated that, and I quote, "at such time as the number of customers or generators avail themself..." "At such time as the number of customers or generators avail themselves to the net metering tariff approaches 1,000 customers, the issue of whether a limitation should be imposed by Guam on the aggregate capacity eligible for net metering treatment will be received and examined by PUC." And then, of course, they have this requirement of a report that must be made to them, which is on Page Three, and therefore of that. The reason why I bring this up is because there was a concern that because of the number of schools in which would be participating in this solar energy, green energy, is that the numbers of school, of course, with the number of meters that they have, was about 100 and 146. And then, and currently, according to GPA in their discussion, that there are 80 customers currently, so it definitely has not even come close to the 1,000 customers that's stipulated here in this resolution by PUC. On Page Three, on the power agreement, this was brought up by GPA, but because their concern is that, well, do you want to have maybe 41, you know, contracts? And then the language was, "They may enter into a single proposal for one DOE facility power purchase agreement or multiple." So it's not to say then that it would one, and although, yes, they would say that maybe a large company, a global company, as a matter of fact, is the term that they use, should come in and then, you know, have that one contract. But then what we're saying in the very beginning, and they realize that as well, is that there is some preference to local businesses and wanting them to participate in this, because what we're addressing here is the fuel cost that leaves the island, and then what we want to do is to allow for these contracts with individual companies to be able then to grow the economy, provide jobs, and we're also, of course, being very business friendly. And on Page Four, as the sentence continues, and we called, actually, we spoke to John Brown, who everyone knows who he is in terms of some of the procurement process, and we were able to check what the law says, and we called GPA, I mean, GSA as well. And one of the things that GPA had mentioned that they were concerned about too is this process, because earlier, and if you notice that on Line Five where it says underscore, double underscore of GSA was the amendment I made before with recess, and instead what's going to be new here is a multi-step bid that will be conducted by GSA. And what they would be able to do when you say a multi-step bidding, and the definition by two GR, it says that multi-step sealed bidding is a two-phase process consisting of a technical first phase, composed of one or more steps in which bidders submit unpriced technical offers to be evaluated by the territory, and a second phase in which those bidders whose technical offers are then determined to be acceptable during the first phase have their price bid considered. So that's the definition, straight out of our books. There is a language, of course, where I know GPA is seeking, because they're saying that, you know, because of the nature of the business, you know, with electricity, that we provided this language to say that DOE and GSA shall seek then technical consultation from GPA. And then it also says further that they could then work with the Guam Renewable Energy Association and a third-party renewable energy consultant in implementing that particular section. On Page Five, the double underscore lines, eleven, ten, and eleven, this was an amendment that was accepted and proffered by Senator S. Nicholas, so we made sure that that language continues to stay on. There, the, on G, on Line Sixteen, the qualified PPA providers, and this was a question that was brought up by Speaker Panglinen, where it says that they must possess then a valid Guam business license. What we added on was prior to the award of the contract. Then on Page Six, the same amendment that Senator S. Nicholas proffered, we also made sure that that would continue to be there, because it was accepted by the body. On same page, on Lines 23 to 27, what we're saying here is that the reason why you see a 70-year timeframe, because in order for the provider to qualify for tax credit, it must be sold at fair market price after seven years, but what this is, is that it's an option, so just to make that available, just in case if, because that was, again, another question that was brought up by, I think at that time it was Senator Limpiako who said, "What are we going to do?" And we say that, and they turned it over to the department at the end of the license period, the contract, then, do we really want to end up with that? So we put this other option that was provided by GRIA that because, that it had to be after the seven-year period, only because you don't want to, I mean, they, that was the condition of that tax credit. On Page Seven, especially with Lines 23, that these are conditions, and again, it was a concern of GPA about the conditions to locate and co-locate. And what this is, is that it is requiring that the qualified PPA providers, that they must do their due diligence, and to be able to identify rooftops of all DOE-owned schools and other facilities that are going to be occupied, that they may not be, and if they find that they're not financially feasible due to the age or the quality of the school building, then they'll be able then to go out and locate or co-locate the panels. So, the other concern that GPA had was the grid, and then, and the concern is the brownout, dirty power, what have you, and how the community may react to it, and that's the whole reason for co-locating, that in case they are unable to receive renewable energy source from that particular school, then under that lease agreement that's being interconnected with the grid, that they'll be able to co-locate. The, the area on Page Nine, that where it says nine to 14, that each participating school, I'm sorry, even before that, that the savings, that 50% of that savings, we would like it to go into the Salapi Prinsipat so that the schools can continue to use those monies to further reduce some of their energy costs as stipulated by GPA, when they're saying that maybe what we need to do is to consider lights as well, and probably even weatherization of windows. And then the second would be the exact same thing, but it actually goes into an energy efficient fund, so that then they can have these monies then available for other energy savings as a result of going with solar panels. And, and I know that at the end of it is, because this is a new fund, that it'll be created within the DOE. The language now here that, of course, and I would, I would read that to you now, the concern about the need to have PUC involved in fear that, they're saying that in the original bill, what we had done, I mean, the other substituted bill, what we had done is that we have ventured into an area that we should not, especially with PUC, to, you know, when their responsibility is to do the regulation. And I like to, to share here that the very first thing with PUC is the, and I have a copy of this, and of course I can show it to you, unless you would like it to be a part of this as an exhibit, I could do that, and that's the, 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 what's, I don't know what they call this, in the matter of GPA's authority on base rate filing. Because, and that goes back to the very beginning where I had mentioned earlier that until they reach that 1,000, that, you know, of course, they, I mean, that's the amount that's set by them, and I mentioned earlier that DOE has 156 meters, meaning four, 156 individual meters as customers, so 80 plus 156 is 236 then meters, so it's still below that 1,000. In the, in this same document, if I may read then, is Georgetown's testimony and recommendations, is that Georgetown recommended that, quote, "No change to the current rate mechanism contained in the interim net metering rider." They maintain that there has been no evidence provided by GPA in its testimony or in response to discovery requests that would indicate that the interim net metering rider isn't performing exactly as GPUC and Guam policymakers anticipated, and that there are, and that there are any unexpected consequences from its operations. Georgetown further maintains that the current net metering rate is stimulating and promoting the energy, renewable energy industry in Guam, and that a change at this time would be reviewed as inconsistent with previous established public policy, which is Public Law 27-132. In addition, they noted, Georgetown noted, that interim tariff has a limitation that once 1,000 net metering customers are on the system, that this issue be reviewed by PUC. And I say this because, again, the limit was, I mean, is 1,000, and by adding, taking the 80 that currently are customers, and then with DOE 156. And finally, the recommendation by the administrative law judge said that based on the foregoing, the administrative law judge hereby recommends that PUC reject GPA's proposed Schedule C and leave the interim net metering tariff in place until such time as GPA can propose a cost and methodology that adequately supports a change in the current scheme. Now, the other big question that was brought to us was then Bond Counsel. And Bond Counsel did give, sent a letter that was given to us by, by GPA, and the concern, of course, by Bond Counsel, which is Section 6.20, the GPA Revenue Bond Indenture, which was dated in December 1992, under which all outstanding GPA senior revenue bonds have been issued, provides as follows. And of course, the government hereby pledges to the holders of all bonds of the government will not repeal or amend or modify, and would substantially impair the powers, duties, or effectiveness of PUC thereunder in relation to the authority. They further said, and see, and this is where in the legislation, he was saying that if we did that, of course, then we would be interfering in, in the role of PUC. And then that brings us then, of course, to the Page, Page 11, where I deleted then that language on Lines 14 to 18, not touching the, the bond covenant for, for PUC, rather, in its role in setting the rates for that. The other is that we found also that Bond Counsel stated, and to show, because they're saying that there would be lost revenues to GPA, and when GPA went out to get the bonds, what they had to do, and what they did do, of course, is they provided a schedule, and in that schedule, what they did was that they showed exactly what, let me see if I can pull that out here, I know, I'm trying to make this as fast as I can, Mr. Speaker, because I know you're looking at me and you're trying to say, hurry up. Okay, on the rate, on the rate revenue, there are two bondholders to actually pay here, what we call here, and this, by the way, is from the Guam Power Authority, revenue bonds of $340 million that they, they went out and borrowed, that's the 2012 Series A. And in this, the great covenant, we're saying that to the senior bondholders, what the, what the government has to do to make sure is that GPA, instead of reading the whole thing, must establish a fixed prescribed and collected amount that comes up to the net revenues equal to at least 1.3 times, and in layman's terms, because I really have to learn all about this myself, is that normally what it is, is that when you, when you're, when you take your net revenues and then your debt obligation, you divide it by your debt obligation, then you'll be able to know how much money, then you have to be able to make your payment. But in addition to that, to make sure there is that cushion, there is that 3%, that's why it's 1.3, and that's for the senior bondholders. But then we didn't stop there, there are the subordinate bondholders, and their requirement is 1.2. So that now takes me then, I'm trying to do this as fast as I can, and that takes me now to a table that, that GPA had put together when they went out to get the bonds. And, and what they, when they did do this, what they did, of course, in this long list, their operating expenses, then, of course, you want to subtract your senior lien holder, and then your subordinate, and then what your remaining balance would be, but more importantly, is because they want to make sure that there is that, that cushion, so to speak, and in looking at 2012, because 2013, yet they have not done, you know, the actual debt service coverage and cash, on a cash basis, is that, remember, I said 1.3 for senior and 1.2 for the subordinate. And in the, in the chart that was provided in their projection, but rather than use that, I actually was able to receive the actual now report that came out, the schedule, which is Table Five, Page 42 of their document, which says historical and projected operating results and debt service coverage cash basis. And when I looked at 2012, remember I said earlier, what's required is 1.3, well, in this actual now for 2012, it's 2.27, so there's definitely monies available there, they just want to make sure that 1.3 is available for the senior. The subordinate says 1.2, and what's on the actual report analysis is 1.44. And, and that's the actual report now. I can't speak, of course, to the future, and even in their, in their projection as well, or their proposal, it's definitely slightly, you know, it depends, it goes up or down. So, and then, so what we're saying, so that was the concern, that it would violate that, those two, the subordinate and the senior bondholders, and based on the actual, I mean, the actual study that came out, it's showing that that would not be the case, because, like I said earlier, it's 1.3 for the senior, what's actually showing in their final analysis is 2.27, and for the subordinate, 1.2, and the actual for 2012 is 1.44. So, so what this is showing, is showing just the opposite, so, but the thing that we have to consider, and this is the other exciting thing, is that in the, in the analysis, when we're saying, yeah, there are going to be some loss to GPA, but we're forgetting about the organic growth that's actually happening, and just think about this, the gain revenues. Right now, we're going to have a new hospital that's going to open, we're going to have a new hotel that's going to open, that's, you know, where the convention center is going to be at, that's the Israel Building, we're going to have a new shopping center that's going to be right, be right across, in two months, right across the Holiday Inn. We have about, the governor had said about anywhere between 200 to 300 affordable housing that are now under construction, and then what we recently passed was to help, we gave about $2 million for single-family houses, we're looking again at revenues coming in for, for that. So, these, this is just organic growth, so that means then, there are many opportunities for GPA to be able to get all of these companies online, so that then, you know, there won't be this negative impact that GPA is saying right now. And so, I just think about exactly, you know, when we say we've got a 13.3% of unemployment, and then we've got this new industry coming in, new jobs, new tax base, so income tax, GRTs, and you name it, you know, I think we would find that GPA will be, will be, continue to be stable, continue to be, to provide, you know, and bring on new customers online. So, and I'm really sorry, I know Renee... So, and I'm really sorry, I know Renee, I'm sorry, I went over my time, but thank you very much.
Were Justin Poe implementing a rule and enforcing a rule that was set by somebody else?
Sorry.
Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the hard work of Speaker Womp, but to try and move this bill forward. I do stand in support of it. There are some items here that I would like to go through. The first is a real quick technical amendment on Page 4, Line 26. It says third part, I believe it's intended to read third party, so I'd just like to add a Y there. Page 4, Line 26. On Page 7, Line 24, the word all, I believe should read any. And this is in respect to when the qualified providers looking to co-locate. If the qualified provider during its due diligence identifies the rooftops of, I believe it should be any G D O E schools, Line 24, Page 7, any, because, you know, there may be one and not all. So I strike all and replace with any.
Any objection?
And then on Page 9, I just had a whole question now of exactly how this new construct works, and this is, this is what is, I believe, substantively different from the original, most recent iteration of this bill. And right now, and I guess this is a question to the author. So when we install these solar systems and we start generating these savings, Page 9, when we start generating these savings, through this legislation, what's going to happen is 50% of the savings is going to go to the Solapi Prince apartment. That's the individual accounts for each of those respective schools to use for, you know, the daily maintenance needs of the schools. Now, what I'm trying to understand here is the remainder language, the new language from Lines 9 through 20, 20, I'm sorry, Lines 9 through 19, referencing the Energy Efficient Fund that's referenced later in the bill. So I'm to understand that of 100% of the savings, 50% is going to Solapi Prince apartment, and the remaining 50% is going to this fund?
Do you yield, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The reason for this is that because in our conversation also with GPA, they said you just don't want to do just a solar energy, but what you also want to take into consideration and take it even beyond that, is that to possibly do lighting equipment and weatherization, and that's on Line 16. And then in addition, is that with this money, then DOE also might be able to use it to do that energy audit, to see just how much of lighting equipment and weatherization would be needed for that school. So we just don't want to say, we want to do this, but then we're not going to support it with any additional funding. And if the funds are, they're going to be that savings, we like it to be able to continue to go towards green energy, and then in addition, to help the schools individually in terms of their minor maintenance repair.
Was that satisfactory, Senator?
It is, Mr. Speaker, thank you. And I think that it's a great concept. My concern is that this kind of operates in a silo in the overall capital improvement plans of the department, because what happens now is 50% of all of these savings, see, what I was of the original assumption was, as we install these solar systems, we're going to be saving money. And half of the savings are going to go to Solapi Prince apartment to directly benefit the schools, and that's great. I was hoping at some point for some of those savings to actually be realized by the taxpayers in terms of us not having to appropriate as much as we did before for energy usage. But what we're doing is, we're already pre-committing every dollar of savings to this new energy efficient fund and what it's intended to do. And its intentions are good. It's to, you know, for energy efficient lighting, equipment, and weatherization. The only thing that concerns me about now going in this direction is if money goes into this fund and we're spending it on energy efficient lighting or weatherization, but it's being done outside of the scope of the capital improvement plans of the overall district, are we going to be spending money for the purpose of spending money as mandated by this fund? Or are we going to be, is there a better use of the funds? Perhaps maybe we could have it go to DOE maintenance overall, you know, because I don't want us to be putting in LED expensive light bulbs that are meant to have a useful life of 20 years and realize their savings over the course of the life of the lightbulb, but the building is going to come down in 10 years. You know, so I just have a slight concern about us committing and focusing like a laser beam on energy efficiency, which is a good thing. But if we're doing it outside the greater scope of the overall capital improvement plans of the district, we may be buying items that the return on investment would be spread out over a useful life that might not directly match the assets that they're being applied to. So I would be more interested in perhaps having half of the savings go directly to maintenance in and of itself, I mean, just general maintenance of the schools. We'll already be getting the energy efficiency from the solar panels, but I think that we need to give management the flexibility to allow their maintenance initiatives to prioritize what the schools need. And if it may be in the interest of the department and of the capital improvement plans of the district, to purchase, for example, LED lights that have a long useful life and return the investment over a prolonged period, and they're able to match that with the useful life of the facility, and it fits in within the overall maintenance needs of the whole school system, I can totally get behind that. But I'm just a little concerned that we're going to be limiting it strictly to an energy efficiency initiative that might be taking away resources from more immediate needs, like fixing air cons or leaky roofs, and those kind of things that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily in the energy efficiency category, but are critical to the maintenance of the schools. So I kind of wanted to just kind of put that out there for the author to consider. And if I may defer my time now and yield to the author and what she would like to consider at this point.
Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator, for that suggestion. You know, at first, that's, you know, we said we wanted to go to the schools to continue for minor maintenance, but, you know, the previous senator is correct, because, you know, that's an area in which we is sorely in need of additional monies. And that should be easy then to do, is that on Line 11, where it says that the savings then shall be transferred to the maintenance division to be used for maintenance and repair of all schools. So if that is okay with it, that's the first one. And then delete the rest of the sentence.
Let's do the First Amendment.
I'm sorry?
Let's do them separately.
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
The First Amendment is?
Line 11, transferred to the maintenance division for maintenance and repair of all schools, of all DOE schools.
Any Senator wish to be heard on that amendment?
And then delete then.
Any objection?
And that means you're going to delete everything all the way to the end where it says P P A, but the funds should be made available within 10, 30 days of each quarter that will remain. Then we'll go, and you'll delete.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
The Second Amendment is deletion of the rest of that line, of those two lines.
Which is Line 11 to 13.
Yes.
Up to P P A.
Any objection? Anyone wish to speak on that?
The other amendment then will be Lines 15 to 18, is to then delete that, because that's the, you know, for the other projects, so that, there won't be a need for that, which is subsection T.
Any objection? Everybody understand the amendment?
And then you go then to the last page, which will be Section 5, and to delete that, which is the Energy Efficient Fund. So that will be in Page 11 from Lines 12 to 21. And...
Is that, well, let's take that one first.
Okay.
On the Energy Efficient Fund. Any objection? Anyone wish to be heard?
Yes, and can I ask legal counsel then, based on removing that now, that the language then is reflected in the title? If there's anything there that needs to be changed?
Counsel will be instructed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Nicholas, do you have any further comments?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have one additional amendment, and that is on Page 10, Line 8. This language here from Lines 8 through Lines 14 is intending to narrow down what the solar energy system parameters are to be applied to. And in the earlier portions of the bill, we had a section there for co-location for benefit of the schools, but in this particular section, we did not address co-location. So I would like to add an amendment after the word on on Line 8, to read or located for the, or co-located for the benefit of, or co-located for the benefit of, and then starting again on Line 9, G D O E owned schools.
All right, please write that down, and we'll get that. All right. All right, Senator Nicholas, is that it? Well, no, there was that amendment that you wanted to make. Any objections to the last amendment proposed by Senator? And please write those down and initial them for the clerks. Yes, please, everybody? Senator Morrison, I understood your hand was up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to rise in support of Bill 74. I certainly appreciate the authors and the co-authors' work into this measure, Mr. Speaker, and I commend the author for their work in working with the private sector, working with the Department of Education to look at or find solutions to addressing the operating costs of the Department of Education. Clearly, this bill has embraced technology and looking at innovative ways to addressing the ever-increasing cost to the Department of Education. And, Mr. Speaker, a million dollars saved is a million dollars that could go into textbooks in our schools, air cons in our schools, needed repairs at Simon Sanchez High School, after-school programs, reviving after-school programs, youth centers in our community to deter our children from negative influence in our community. Rather than a million dollars going to spending for power that we know is going to some foreign land, to some foreign company, where we don't see any economic benefit or any educational benefit with those monies. Savings to utilities in our island, isolated in the Pacific, Mr. Speaker, is monies that can circulate into our economy. And we know that in the past decade, the, our utility costs, our cost of living has crept up in us. And of course, a lot of that is attributed to the cost of fuel prices. Of course, we know, even the United States and many countries are controlled by the ever-increasing, and we don't stand alone in this global economy. But in order, Mr. Speaker, to address the ever-increasing cost of living that has bared the working families and our business in our community, is to ensure that our government is innovative and clearly takes an aggressive approach to looking at new renewable technologies. My concern is talking to some of the folks that may have some objection to this bill or trying to spin this bill in a different light is clearly by the motive of looking at how they could protect the revenues at GPA or our utilities. And rightfully so, Mr. Speaker. GPA has to pay for its operation just like anyone else. But I'd rather like, see GPA look at its fixed operational costs and see where they can reduce there before they could pass on these higher rates to our community. I'd also like to see GPA start looking at additional potential customers to address any revenue loss to their operations. For example, GPA in its body, Mr. Speaker, could look at embracing new innovation like Senator Duaneus's bill, the electric car bill. Energy policies like this will certainly boost revenues or cover those losses, because our people can now plug in at home versus gas up. As the speaker mentioned earlier, the authors mentioned earlier, GPA is targeted for additional customers very, very much around the corner, as the new hospital will be coming onboard, the Israel hotels, the Tumon shopping malls, and I believe 300 new housing units will be coming onboard. These projects will eventually offset any type of revenue loss, Mr. Speaker, to GPA. The goal, Mr. Speaker, I believe, of the author of this bill is to embrace innovation, embrace new technology in renewables, and open the door, open the door, so that our customers, our people, can look at ways or have options to reduce the cost of living on their island. And our utilities have to also embrace and work with innovation, embrace new technology. Because standing in the way of innovation, Mr. Speaker, is clearly standing in the wrong side of history. So with that said, I wanted to, I spoke to the author earlier, I wanted to proffer an amendment, but I feel there's a lot of work that was done, put into this, and addressing a lot of the concerns of my colleagues. And I hope, I look forward to working with her in the future and looking at renewables and expanding it further, expanding it further in our community. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. Senator Duaneus, did I see your hand up? You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 7432. And I'd like to commend the author and the cosponsors of this very valuable piece of legislation. Mr. Speaker, I will say it's no secret that I've listened to the both sides of this issue. As the retiring speaker mentioned, there are a lot of concerns that have been put on the table with regard to managing the integration of new technology, renewables, and the current energy provider, and what it means to revenues and what it means overall. I want to say that I have been extremely impressed by the author's willingness to sit down, to modify, and even though I know she, by probably her own rule and others that have placed on this floor, hurriedly went through the information, but it's because of her due diligence and her work that she had to get that information out and show that she's done everything within her power to manage this policy, to make it workable, and to address all concerns. I thank the retiring speaker. I thank the retiring speaker for mentioning the fact that we do have a bill, hopefully to be heard soon, on embracing electric vehicles, fully-electric vehicles. The other day, Nissan unveiled their leaf, and there's a lot of excitement that's been generated with regard to that issue. Mr. Speaker, not much, but a couple of months before introduction of the EV bill was GPA's release and write-up in the PDN discussing that option as a great offset to revenue loss and keeping money on Guam by discontinuing to ship millions and millions and millions of barrels of fossil fuels into our island on an annual basis. Mr. Speaker, I also most heartily agree with the author's description on the fact that this policy is designed to usher in economic transformation while embracing technology and where the world is going, Mr. Speaker. I think that there is no question, when organic growth was discussed, there is no question that you always have to take into consideration. As the good speaker and I and Senator Barnes were out in Honolulu and looking how their Hawaii's managing this issue, there was a senator there, Mr. Speaker, that won in his district, a state senator, by over two-thirds of the vote by running on a solid platform of renewables and embracing Hawaii's aggressive movement towards 70% renewable energy by the year 2030. What I enjoyed most about the gentleman's presentation during our APIL meeting was he did say continuously, "You have to be at the table with the utility provider." That, Mr. Speaker, is no question. And the speaker's done that. Mr. Speaker, I also say this as I move to close, that there is so much opportunity in this exciting and not necessarily so new renewable endeavor. There are entire countries, particularly in Europe, that are operating upwards of 80% on renewable energy, waste-to-energy. The list goes on and on. And, Mr. Speaker, when we talk about sometimes, and let's just talk about it, let's put it out there. When we talk about revenue protection, sometimes we're talking about employment. Sometimes we're talking about whatever it is that we want our operation to be sustainable. But the fact of the matter is, there are equal-to or higher-paying jobs in this industry. You don't have to look far from our shores within this great rising tiger of Asian economies to see this transformation. It's a brave, bold, new world that embraces people who understand how to manage infrastructure. So I say, Mr. Speaker, let's get behind this. Let's embrace it. Let's manage it. Let's work together to ensure that that happens, Mr. Speaker. Because when we do policies such as this, it's not designed to pick on anybody. It's not designed to say, "Hey, you know, let's pull revenue." It's designed to say there are better ways to do things. There are greener ways to do things. There are industries out there that are just waiting to hire new people and to spread that money around. And as, once again, in closing, the speaker said, to allow for the payment of different energy requirements just coming online in the next few months. Because Guam is moving forward. The buildup's coming. As the military people said, it's not about if, but when. And you know, Mr. Speaker, one of the presentations that continues to be made every time we get the update on our economy, Guam needs a third leg. This industry can be a third leg, but we have to start now. So, Mr. Speaker, Sisduus Maasi Tatlu, for the opportunity to thank the authors and to embrace and extend my full support for Bill 7432. Sisduus Maasi.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Ada? Senator Panglinen?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I certainly applaud the author of the bill for moving forward with this to at least try and get the renewable energy power generation at our DOE facilities. I must admit, though, that I think this substitute version of Bill 74 is quite different from what was actually publicly heard. I'm not sure that -- in fact, I just saw this today, this morning. I'm not sure how much time the Guam Power Authority has actually had to review this substitute bill for that matter. I don't know if Department of Education has even had a chance to look at this. But I do have some concerns with the bill. For example, on page 3, starting at line 27, it talks about that the Guam Department of Education may enter into a single proposal for one DOE facility power purchase agreement or multiple GDOE facilities' power purchase agreement. I'm not sure how to interpret that, if that means that one company can submit a bid for all 42 school facilities? Or are we going to require that the bidding companies provide a bid for each school facility? So if there are 42 schools, they will submit 42 bids? And the reason that is important is because each school will have its own requirement. Obviously, the requirements for retrofitting at the newly-constructed JFK and Okadu would be a lot less than, for example, the retrofitting requirements of Maria El Jowa Elementary School. And so it is not clear whether we're going to go ahead then and allow for one bid for 42 facilities, or are we going to allow for 42 separate bids for each school? And I think that the latter approach will provide for more competition. And you may have, for example, local companies that may not have the capital to be able to actually outfit 42 facilities, but may probably only have the capital that would allow them to outfit maybe five or six facilities. So I'm concerned about, and I'm not really sure how that, you know, what is intended here in section -- that was section 2. It also talks about the -- that the selection, the source selection shall be made using the multi-step bid process. I -- and I'm not -- I'm just not sure, well, why that process versus an invitation for bid? And I'm -- I don't know. I don't know. In this particular case, I'm not sure that a multi-step bid is the way to go with this. But probably more important is the fact that this procurement action is to be undertaken by GSA. And I would have to wonder, who is going to be actually tasked with the responsibility of writing the specifications of what is needed? Now, I know that there's language in here about that DOE and GSA shall seek technical consultation from GPA, can seek it from the Guam Energy Office, from the Department of Public Works, from the Guam Renewable Energy Association, and/or a third-party renewable energy consultant, but at no cost. Well, I'm not sure there's many consultants out there who will actually work, provide this kind of information. And I don't think that the development of specifications for what we are looking for is going to be, you know, a two-day exercise. I think there's got to be a lot of -- there's going to be a lot of technical resources that's going to have to be put into it. But I'm just concerned that we have not put the finger on somebody to say, "Okay, GPA, you shall be responsible for drafting the specifications of how we're going to implement this -- putting in, implementing the renewable energy on the DOE facilities." I'm not sure I understand what is intended here on page 4, where it reads, starting at line 7, or actually, starting at line 6, it reads, "The qualified provider will be responsible for providing a power purchase agreement to cover no more than 80% of the school's power needs." What's that mean? So in other words, if there's enough roof space to be able to put in addition, the size of the solar panels that are needed to be able to generate 100% of the school's needs, why are we going to limit the provider to only 80%? Why? So I'm quite confused by that. I've already spoken about on paragraph D there, line 21, page 4, basically saying, you know, between DOE and GSA, you guys can go get your technical consultation from GPA and all that, and it'll be at no cost. And again, that means it's going to be taking resources away from, in this case, Guam Power Authority, to sit down and work on this. And they've got, I mean, it isn't as if they're sitting at the desk, twiddling their thumbs. I've, you know, I've only gone halfway through this thing, and I -- and those are the concerns that I have. So I am concerned about, you know, the fact that we're setting caps here, caps there, and quite frankly, this is, you know, this is, I wish I had probably should have asked that this be sequentially or concurrently referred to the Committee on Utilities so that that committee can actually sit down and discuss, take a -- to sit down with DOE and other stakeholders to find out really what are the implications? What are the implications of if you have GW, GCC, and UOG, if they were to get together, or just GW for that matter, to put on all these solar panels? And we know that renewable energy, that power is really not considered reliable. And so GPA has got to be standing by so that when that power drops from the solar panels, GPA can actually respond with its generated power and be able to continue providing the level of power that is needed. Now, there is hardware that is available to be able to do that. Who's going to make pay for that investment? The renewable power providers or GPA? Who is going to pay for the maintenance that GPA is going to have to put into the system so that it's standing by at all times to be ready to provide power when the renewable energy source drops? And this is the concern that I had raised when we first talked about this, where right now DOE annually has a power bill of about $15 million. If it gets off the GPA grid because it's going to use renewable power sources, the cost that it will enable GPA to avoid is about $10 million. Because that's about how much less oil GPA will have to burn. And so that's fine. We save $10 million a year worth of oil. That's $10 million that stays in our economy that doesn't get shipped off to Singapore. But then there's the remaining $5 million, which is used to pay for the debt service on the power generators, to maintain the power, the infrastructure, the power, the transmission lines and all that. And so that $5 million is now going to be, if GPA, if the way the net metering arrangement works right now, then that means that $5 million that GP -- that DOE is not going to pay anymore, is going to have to be shifted to the remainder, to the customers that are still with GPA and that's not on the power. And so that inevitably will trigger a rate increase to the rest of the customers who are still on the GPA grid. So I do have some very serious concerns about how we're moving with this. I think we need to move in the direction that we're moving with, that Bill 74 is taking us. But I think we've got to be more deliberate with it. I think we've got to have more dialogue with the stakeholders and make sure that we've -- that, you know, that we, all those little nuances that's involved with an undertaking like this, that we have actually identified them and addressed them before we enter into some 25-year contract. So those are my concerns, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues to duly consider that. Thank you.
Very much, Senator Panglinen, then Senator Muny Barnes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I rise in full support of this legislation. As the original author of the net metering program and trying to get GPA to move to provide opportunities for our people to use technology to help them lower the cost of living in the manner of paying for power, it's about time that we really have a greater push towards implementing of this program. It took a long time for GPA to move on this issue and this matter, and I continue to feel resistance on the part of GPA. We know that GPA is making some moves to try and consolidate operations, and hopefully by consolidating operations, they'll be able to cut operating costs. But it doesn't seem to matter whatever happens with regards to what the people do to affect the cost of electricity on the island. GPA sends out public service messages, paying for them on the radio, telling us that we need to conserve power. And when we all successfully do so, then they raise the base rate because they got to recover from their decreased revenues, which means that they continue to operate and on their operating cost side, not adjusting and planning that if they're telling people to conserve and people conserve, there's going to be less revenue, so therefore they have to look at their operational costs and cut their operational costs as well. They seem to kind of continue to spend and increase operating costs without due regard to what's happening on the revenue side. And I think that that's the imbalance that I see in terms of the And I think that that's the imbalance that I see in terms of the approach that we have. And that's probably one of the reasons why they continue to resist and full implementation of the net metering program. And one of the concerns I have, though, Mr. Speaker, I do echo some of the, what I would call inconsistencies in terms of trying to make the interpretation of some of the verbiage in the bill work with the retiring author. I thought that his reading on some of these things could, could provide some clarity if we address some of the concerns that he had. But at, at the minimum, I think that we need to move forward on this time, and, and then move for any additional need to, to make changes, once we push this policy forward. The one concern that I have with regards to this bill, Mr. Speaker, is on page, let me, is on page 10. And the concern I have, of course, is with the deletion of the language, starting on line 14, where it says, "Any contract issued under this shall be under the net metering as defined as a one-to-one exchange," all the way down to line 18 at DOE. Speaker, what this basically does is it reduces the value of the production of the solar producer under a net metering program, or under an alternative energy production, of the energy that they're, that he or she produces. And I think this is essential, that at this time, we keep the value of that one-to-one exchange. And I think that that's supported by the PUC order and report that was done and a review by the Guam Power Authority under its FY14 base rate-setting filing, GPA docket 11-09, under the net metering program. What this does is, under the net metering program, in that, in that order of the base rate filing, the net metering program is a one-to-one exchange. It recognizes that the customer that produces it gets full credit for the retail price of that power. And what this does is it eliminates that. So, this basically changes the net metering program as reviewed and approved by the PUC, and makes it less valuable, and therefore, less economical for this independent power producer now on a small-scale basis, for the production of that and for the recoup of his investments. And so, I am very concerned that deletion of this may hamper the development and, and the rate of installation of these small net metering programs. And so, Mr. Speaker, based upon what was decided on in that rate-based filing with the PUC, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and, and restore the language there that has been stricken out, so that we do get, give this producer the full retail value as was determined to be normal policy in, in net metering programs in other jurisdictions that the Georgetown Consulting Group, consultants to the PUC, had reviewed. And so, this would then make this consistent with that rate-based docket number before the PUC.
So, I understand the amendment is to restore the stricken language on page 10, line 14 to 18.
Yes, that would be my amendment.
On the Pangolin amendment, any senator wish to be heard? I see the hand of Senator Siniklis. Madam Speaker, did you have your hand up, or, okay. Senator Siniklis first, and then the Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of this particular amendment. I believe that this is the, the very essence of what the benefits of net metering are. And I just wanted to kind of put that into context of some of the numbers that were spoken about earlier. It was discussed that the power bill of GPA, I mean, I'm sorry, of DOE is fifteen million, of which ten million is going to be saved on the cost of fuel, and that five million is going to be an additional cost that needs to be absorbed. The reality is that even if we, that through restoring this language at a dollar-for-dollar rate of, of exchange, we're only talking about eighty percent of the total amount of power utilization, which is roughly eighty percent of the fifteen million dollars. So, eighty percent of fifteen million, we're looking at twelve million. And if we lessen out the ten million in fuel costs, we're looking at two million. And that two million is assuming that the eighty percent of power generation from these systems is at a hundred percent of the year. And that's not likely going to be the case. We're going to have cloudy days, rainy days, those days where power is probably not going to be as generated as it normally would under ideal conditions. So, the two mil, so, we're looking at two million in a worst-case scenario impact GPA. I believe that it could be anywhere between one to two million. And even at that rate, between one to two million, as the, as the proffer of the amendment mentioned, there comes a point where GPA has to, before, just assuming that they're going to pass that cost on to consumers, needs to first step back and say, how are we first going to realize this impact through cost savings? And I believe that that range of impact, when you break the numbers down that way on the utilization, and on the dollar-for-dollar realization as, as proffered in the amendment, I think that's something that GPA should be able to manage. So, I rise in full support of this amendment. I think that it stays in line with the spirit of net metering. And in analysis of the cost impacts, I think that the utility should be able to manage its costs without having to pass those on to the consumers. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, you recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I mean, when I had removed that language, it was at the request of GPA and PUC, and primarily because they're saying that we should not be interfering in any of the rate, you know, rate assessment, and that should be left with, of course, PUC. But I think that the mover of the amendment is going to clarify that even further now by actually having, making reference instead to a GPA docket, a number where it actually, the language that they currently have, based on that decision, would be then in, will support, of course, where what the mover of the amendment is, where in future, maybe should they decide to change it, then that part, you know, based on, on that docket would not be applicable then. At least, that's my understanding. So, I have no objection at all.
Senator Pangolin? Do you wish to take a short recess?
For?
Were you going to be making a motion to? Yeah, but I thought he was, you, you were going to make a explanation. Okay.
Yeah, what this, what this is, Mr. Speaker, is that this mirrors the current policy of the PUC and the current order of the PUC with regards to what the value is of that power that is produced. In the PUC docket order, it sets the retail, or the, the value of that power to be a, on a retail basis for the production of power. So, and again, one of the features, of course, that we have is that any excess power above consumption that is produced, GPA doesn't really have to pay the, the producer. It's, it's only up to a hundred percent of your consumption, but it is on a one-to-one basis. So, this language of one-to-one exchange is consistent with the PUC order. So, there was concern that we're changing the rate or interfering with the rate, and it does not. It just mirrors that rate.
Thank you. So, there's no objection to the reinstating lines 14 to 18? The amendment to reinstate lines 14 to 18, is that correct? Senator Muny Barnes, on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to stand and rise in full support of this bill, and I also want to thank the good author of the legislation for giving me an opportunity to be one of the co-sponsors and work closely with her as it relates to renewable energy. But I, I just want to ask, based on the amendment right now that was just proffered, if the good previous author of the legislation, I mean, of the amendment on page 10, from lines, where is that? No, the, any, 14 to 18, where's that? The access fee? Line 16, that GPA will not access a power storage fee for excess power produced by GOD schools, and will remain responsible for providing the demand power at no additional charge. I'm just wanting to make sure that, that GP, that GPA will, oh, okay, will not access. Can you just explain that further?
The, the line of concern was GPA will not assess, assess a power storage fee for excess power produced by GDOE schools, meaning that, that any power fed into the GPA system, there'll be no charge that GPA pays to that producer. So, basically, it means a hundred percent of your consumption is all you're going to get in terms of credit, and it's a one-to-one credit. And that GPA, DOE will continue to remain on the grid, and if there's no production from the solar power, the grid kicks in, basically, and you draw from the regular production of power for DOE. And that there's no additional charge to that, because it's the independent power producer that will provide all of the hardware for the interconnect. And all of those interconnect would then kick in if there's not power being produced by the solar panels. The interconnect system kicks in, and regular grid power feeds in. And, and that's just the, the way that the, the net metering system will work. And so, GPA, in other words, can't cut you off because you have a net metering or, or a solar panel production system, can't cut you off the grid, that they'll continue to provide you access to that in, in terms of, when you need to draw power from the regular grid, you can draw power from the regular grid.
Is that satisfactory, Senator?
It, it answers my inquiries, Mr. Speaker. And I want to thank the good former speaker for, for sharing that perspective with me. I want to say, Mr. Speaker, that when this bill was introduced and all the concerns were coming out about this bill, if we did this, and we took away from the GPA grid, that we would be asking our residential users to pay again, not yet again, another rate increase, because we're taking away from, from the fixed cost from GPA. I want you to know, Mr. Speaker, that every step of the way, when there was concerns, the good author of the legislation worked with us in, in reference to the inquiries from our constituents out there, and, and went even a step further to, to pull out what exists today as it relates to, to historical operation and debt service data, to make sure that if there was any concerns from standards and GPA, that those questions would be answered. And, and also to make sure that, that based on what is calculated today by GPA, and, and what is going to be projected, that those, that, that delineation was, was given to us in a form of the research and, and getting the answers to that, that she explained earlier this afternoon. I also want to say, Mr. Speaker, that this legislation is not new, as, as in, has GPA already worked on it? Has there any proven technology that's out there? As we look today, Mr. Speaker, we already have GPA working on this system. We already have a private school that has engaged with GPA to work this program out, and, and the successes today is being realized. And when this legislation came into play, we said, what better way than to try and save on energy, save on having to pay out, making sure that if there's any money that needs to be recaptured, that's being utilized outside for fuel, fossil fuels, that the, the resources come back to the island, and that the island, and that the people, and that the, the, the Department of Education would be the one that would reap the benefits of having to recirculate that here back into the economy. And I, I just want to thank her for her effort and working closely with, with me and my other colleague, Senator Yamashita, in as far as really taking the time to go out and get the answers from GPA, and, and having the markup hearings with GPA and other stakeholders in the renewable energy, or new organization that was just introduced to the island, and making sure that their concerns were addressed. So, Mr. Speaker, I think that this is a, a very good legislation. I hope my colleagues look at its benefits and, and jump on the bandwagon with us, and know that, that this Bill 74-32 LS, as substituted on the floor by the author, is a good piece of legislation that will have resources coming back to the Department of Education. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of this, and I want to thank the good speaker again, from Inalahan and Sanahanya, for giving me the opportunity to co-sponsor this with her. Senator Massey.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Hagen.
Thank you very much, Nuklin Asidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand here in support of not only this particular legislation, but also understanding the concern of the Oversight Chair. And, you know, Mr. Speaker, anytime that you take potential revenues from Guam Power Authority, guess who's going to be left holding the bag? Those are the remaining rate payers within that particular system. And what complicates the situation even more is that GPA has a significant amount of outstanding bond obligations that it has to remit, their payments on an annual basis. But, you know, Mr. Speaker, this is something that I was hoping, that with all of their experts in this arena, that they were anticipating to take place. Because earlier this year, St. Francis School had converted to solar energy. They had partnered with some of the private solar companies, or some of the energy conservation or renewable energy companies, and they're, they have already moved in that particular direction. Mr. Speaker, after that, a good number of the arts diocese, I believe, schools and facilities were also coming out and converting to renewable energy, or solar energy in some cases. And guess what, Mr. Speaker, in this case, St. Francis Church? By the end of this calendar year, we anticipate that in fact, they will be initiating efforts to convert to renewable energy. And what are the arrangements? In most cases, these arrangements have been with private firms. So, it's already taking. The train has left the station, so to speak, in terms of some of these potential revenues or previously existing revenue bases being affected. And I bring all of this up because I share the concern of the Oversight Chair. The reality is there. But you know, Mr. Speaker, despite the reality that has been existing over the course of the past five or six months, where these activities have taken place, some of these plans have been implemented, some of these plans have started to be discussed. And I understand that proposal will be entertained next week. Mr. Speaker, obviously, in that case, I need to listen intently, because if it's to upgrade infrastructure, to address some of the other infrastructure requirements within GPA, then we need to seriously consider giving GPA that flexibility to go out and borrow those additional funds. But my question is, prior to even presenting that initiative or that request for an additional thirty-nine million dollars, what have they done to look at the entire environment of renewable energy? They've entered, I understand, into a contract with perhaps one or two private firms to not only begin providing that, but then, in the same token, every single day that passes by, there are other entities that are looking at entering into their own individualized contracts, so that they can get power provided to them at perhaps a much more reasonable rate or a slightly lower rate that would result in savings for that particular business or that particular organization. So, Mr. Speaker, although I understand the concern of the Oversight Chair, and they are exactly, they are very legitimate concerns, and I say this because I don't anticipate getting off the major grid, because as a residential customer, obviously, the capacity to move in that direction perhaps may not be as cost-effective as some of these other organizations. So, just using myself as an example, could translate into me and my family eventually and the common people out there in the community eventually absorbing some of these additional costs, rate adjustments like they're always referred to. So, Mr. Speaker, I think that, standing here in support of this legislation, because I support renewable energy, I support the opportunity for the Department of Education to move forward, explore other options, other sources that may be available out there, realize some cost reductions, so that they can take those financial resources and allocate them directly into the operations of the school, allocate them directly into providing resources in the classroom, operate, allocate them directly into providing certified teachers, so that the education of our children in our public schools are not hindered in any way or any fashion. So, although I stand in support of this, I hope that the Guam Power Authority will look at this from a perspective of understanding that perhaps one of their biggest customer base may be veering in a direction where they're entering into financial arrangements or power provider arrangements with a private firm, albeit through GPA, but with a private firm, and it could conceivably take some additional base revenues away from GPA, and that should be considered as part of the overall planning moving forward into the future. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of this legislation, and I certainly hope that the savings or the proposed anticipated cost reductions are realized, so that at least G D O E can have that opportunity to be able to take those resources and reallocate them internally, based on decisions that ultimately are made by not only the superintendent, not only by the Board of Education, but also, just as importantly, that are made by the members of this body. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Hagan. Any other senator wish to be heard? Madam Speaker, Senator Sen. Nicholas, do you have an additional amendment? All right, either way.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Senator, of course, Senator Nicholas has passed and spoke about it originally on page three, where he would like, of course, the amendment here, and I'm going to do it for him, where we deleted one or more. So, what we want to do is to restore that, the words "one or more," and then delete everything on line twenty-seven, and then go to page four and delete the multiple D O E facilities. And then it should read that Guam Department of Education may enter into one or more power purchase agreements to purchase solar energy, and that's the original language in the other substitute bill, so, yeah.
Does everybody understand that amendment? It'd be to reinstate, reinsert "one or more" and remove the underlying section?
Yes, you're right.
Any objection?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What I'd like to do is just briefly, again, if I may then, is at least touch on some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier, and, you know, the question was asked, why limit it to eighty percent and not the one hundred percent? And the eighty percent, you know, and although how maybe it's interpreted in terms of some of the testimonies is that eighty percent of the monies that we pay in the power bill goes off-island, goes to Singapore, and we want to be able to, and they ask that we just don't touch the operating, their operating costs, we just don't want the full amount to then leave the island, or the full amount, rather, to be then to say for the alternative energy. And the reason for that, too, is because, again, when you want to consider some of the facilities. One of the things, again, which is on page four, that was asked, commented about seeking technical assistance and that, you know, why not then ask D O E, I mean GPA, to draft the requirement, and then what consultant would want to do this for free? And because this is, yes, a new industry, green energy is, and there's so much excitement that these individuals, these companies have gotten together and formed themselves as an organization, G R I A. And, you know, so they're excited about this, and, you know, they want to see this happen, and not just for D O E schools, they're, you know, looking to the private sector as well. And there was an offer, but that didn't become a part of this, where GPA was willing, at no cost, they said, to do an assessment of the school. So, that offer was made then, and they're genuine, of course, in wanting to do this, and I really think that, you know, they would continue, because, you know, D O E is one of their biggest company, I mean customers. And so, but at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, GPA remains whole. And there is no way in which this bill is to try to hurt GPA in any way, it was only to try to tap on monies that are going off-island, and then as a result of that, is that, you know, we would reduce the cost of fuel that we're going to purchase that goes off-island, and instead, we give it now to these local businesses who will be helping to reduce our unemployment rate. And also to let, to assure the retiring speaker, and I didn't, and now I have a little bit more time to break this down, but when I look at the 2012 report that was calculated utilizing the actual published 2012 financials of GPA, the historical operation results and debt service, and what we did is that we factored in the five million dollars, just let's just hypothetically, because we really don't know what it is, but that number's being tossed around. So, the total, then, operating revenues that GPA gets is four hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, and if you, let's just hypothetically reduce then the five million, let's say, that is for the operating cost, then their total revenue then will be four hundred and thirty-five million dollars. Then you take their operating cost, these are their fixed costs, is three hundred and eighty-two million, six-five-five. Then what you want to do, remember, we want to protect always is the senior lien and the subordinate lien, so if the senior lien is, this is actual now, twenty-seven, four hundred and eighty-three million dollars, and the subordinate is fifteen million, nine hundred and thirty-four million, so when you add those two, of course, it comes to forty-three, four hundred and seventeen million. And so, after you take their total revenues minus the five million, minus their operating costs, their fixed costs, then what's left of that is fifty-four million. So, then now, from that fifty-four million, you want to make sure you pay your other debts. So, then, like I said, there's the, taking the senior and the subordinate is forty-three. So, forty-three from fifty-four million basically leaves in GPA, an additional eleven million dollars after all their debt service, after all their operating costs, to make sure their fixed costs, you know, are addressed. And so then, these monies, now the eleven million dollars, can be used for other capital, you know, improvement projects that, you know, they see fit. So, the idea then, and the threat that we're always getting, is that they're going to go out and increase the rates, because now we're going to have this solar energy at our schools, it's going to help reduce their utility costs, that we're going to go out now and charge everybody to make up for what's happening at D O E. And that's far from the truth, because this is based on the actual, actual study put together by GPA for 2012. And that's exactly what's showing, I'm not making up any numbers, eleven million dollars in the red, in the black, I'm sorry, I love red, but the color red only. But, again, the last thing is based on Bond Council's request, is to make sure that we do, we always keep the senior lien at one point three and the subordinate lien at one point two, and we're definitely above that, even with what we call, you know, the five million dollars being factored in, we're still above those numbers as required by the bond covenant, by the rate covenant. So, with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make the motion then to move Bill seventy-four dash thirty-two to the third reading file.
Any objection?
And I ask for my colleague's support.
On the motion, go ahead, you can add your co-sponsors.
On the motion, yes, I really like to add, while my colleagues have spoke, I have Senator Duennias, Senator Morrison, Senator Mike Nicholas, Senator Frank, Speaker Ben, Senator McCready, I guess, of course, Tom is going to be part of the fifteen. Thank you very much.
On the amendment, naming the co-sponsors. On the amendment, naming the co-sponsors. I'm sorry, where are we on the agenda, I believe? One twelve, Senator Tom Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have passed around two sheets, which has the amendments that need to be made, and really, a lot of these, I think, are technical amendments. But if we take a look at the amendment, basically, that I've made, is that instead of using the statistic from the Guam Bureau, from the Guam Department of Labor and Statistics, which provides, which sets a much lower median income for Guam at thirty-nine thousand dollars, I think it's reasonable to adopt the median income that is established by the Housing and Urban Development Administration, the HUD. And so then, on page six, line eight, I'm proposing that we strike out the words Guam Department of Labor of Bureau and Statistics and replace that with HUD median income.
On that amendment?
Now, if we do that, if we then adopt that HUD median income as the statistic that we will use for what median income we will use for purposes of the S D C, then that really changes then the threshold that was initially set at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and sets it at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. But when we change the threshold, in order that, you know, the total systems development charge that a new customer pays does not exceed what is already established at a total of fifty-six hundred dollars, we would have to go and adjust the percentages that will be charged for water connection and sewer connections. So, on, on page four, and I'm sorry for jumping around, but you see how it all falls into place. On page four, you'll see then that as a result of adopting a new median income statistic, that then we can adopt a total cost threshold of two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and that will then entail a one point zero one percent charge for water connection and one point six five percent. So, in my, in my, the amendment sheet that I put there, it shows that on line, page four, lines eighteen through twenty-one, we would change those figures, where it reads a hundred and eighty thousand, we would change that to two hundred and ten thousand, where it reads one point two percent, we would change that to one point zero one percent, and where it reads one point eight percent, we would change that to one point six five percent. So, you would find those changes that need to be made on page four, on page five, on page four and five, and actually, page six.
On those amendments, any objection?
And the last amendment that I would make, Mr. Speaker, is on page three, an earlier amendment was made on line fifteen, to really put more definition to that interest rate that will be charged on this amortized systems development fee. And earlier, the gentleman from Baragada had made the amendment that the interest is the interest at the rate of G W A's recent bond issuance. I have passed around to everyone, it's actually an order from the P U C, which was published in April twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, where they actually established the interest rates that's associated with the amortized systems development fee at seven point five percent. So, I have spoken, I have spoken with, I don't know how we want to handle this, do I make an amendment now to delete that amendment and replace it with language that will read "at a rate established by the Guam Public Utilities Commission"?
Legal counsel be instructed to make that appropriate change. Is that understood? Thank you. Any objection to the amendment, Senator Pangolino? No objection?
And so that, Mr. Speaker, is the amendments that I would like to make on Bill one-one-two as substituted, and I would ask that then we move it down to the voting file.
On that amendment, on that motion? Would, just one quick recess, I'll check with the clerks to see if we have completed everything on the agenda.
Very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Hearing no objection.
Mr. Speaker, we need to make some amendment to Bill 140, that's beyond the scope of what a technical amendment is, and so I move that we bring Bill 140 from the third reading file down to the second reading file, and that the sponsor will preside over offering the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection. Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move to make a minor amendment on Bill 140 on Section 2, to place that language into Section 3 of Section 4, or Section 3 of Public Law 25-55, and place it at the end after end.
Can you please copy it? One second, we're trying to find it here.
Madam Speaker, this was done in conjunction of both legal councils and...
Senator, can you please tell us what page and...
This is page one of Bill 140.
Page one. Okay, and what is the amendment?
To place Section 2, the language, Madam Speaker, into Section 3 of Public Law 25-55.
Yes.
And, Madam Speaker, this was done in conjunction of both legal councils.
Senators, please, I'm unable to hear. Senator Morrison, may I continue?
Yes, Madam Speaker, this was done in conjunction with both legal councils to make this technical correction, so that way it's consistent with Public Law 25-55.
Okay, my understanding then is that what we originally have is Section 2, that that would be placed at the end of Section 3.
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so this, everybody then understand, do you want me to read exactly what it is? You're okay. Yes, read it. Okay, I'm sorry. It's about six pages, I mean, six lines, so, but, so it's okay then. So does everybody understand now the amendment? No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion then to place 140-32, the third reading file, no objections, so Senator Especho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we recess until Monday morning at 9:00 a.m.
Monday, Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday at 9:00 a.m., in case we might have to go over some more bills after the, both legal councils and our majority councils most especially points these things out to us. And so I move that we recess till 9:00. But before I do, I want to take leave of the proceedings to wish all of our veterans, Happy Veterans Day, and thank all of them for their service. And I do this on your behalf, if you permit me, as well as on behalf of our Oversight Chairman, Senator Uggan. Madam Speaker, we're good, and the entire body, of course.
Thank you very much, Senator, for that. So on the motion then to recess until 9:00 a.m. Tuesday morning next week. Have a good weekend.